What's that?
I have a security.
Yeah, I do. I do. Awesome.
Thank you. We'll have to share money. No, I didn't. I think they're coming back.
We can.
You're good. Yeah, I've got extra.
Yeah, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Anybody know where the other two are? I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the bid letting.
It's not a public.
Oh, it's not a public hearing. Bid letting on DD sixty sub four tile improvement.
So moved.
Josh, second?
Well, what are we doing opening a hearing?
No, he corrected. Open the bid letting.
Just have Tyler open the bids. I don't think we've ever had a motion for that.
I have it on the agenda, discussion decision, so I'm following the agenda.
Well, that's after the bid letting.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't think we've ever had a motion to.
Tyler, you got all the bids?
The ones that were turned in and handed to me, so.
How many? How many did we get?
Uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
So, then we'll turn over to you to open the bids.
All right, perfect. Back in some sort of act. Some sort of order here. Well, morning all. This is the bid opening for the DD sixty sub four tile improvement project. I'll go through these, uh, quite a few divisions and alternates. I'll go through as quickly but as clearly as I can. Um, got no particular order here, just opening them as the stack is handed to me. So, uh, the first is GM Contracting out of Lake Crystal, Minnesota. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please?
Oh yeah, the bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent.
Thank you.
What's the name of that contractor?
Uh, it's GM Contracting.
GM.
GM Contracting out of Lake Crystal, Minnesota.
And you guys will put a tabulation together afterwards?
Yes, yep, yeah, and I should clarify, we, we will, uh, we are simply opening the bids today. We will tabulate them. Consideration of this is, uh, a week from today at the next board meeting. So, everything today will just be, uh, apparent and for, um, consideration, uh, the tab, again, the tabulations will be, for actual consideration will be next Tuesday, so. The bid security appears complete and correct on that. Proposal, they have recognized addendum one and addendum two. Total on division one, alternate one of four million fifty-five thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and zero cents. Total on division one, alternate two of six million five hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars and zero cents. Total on division one, alternate three of two million eight hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and zero cents. Total on division one, alternate four of three million one thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and zero cents. Division two, alternate one, total of twenty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and zero cents. I should be doing this. I'll do this, I'll, I'll read them, uh, as numbers, second to following those for clarity. That's two-six-nine-seven-eight-point-zero-zero. Total on division two, alternate two of forty thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and zero cents. Total on division three, alternate one of ninety-nine thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars and zero cents. Division three, alternate two, total of one hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and zero cents. Total on division four, alternate one of sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and zero cents. Division four, alternate two of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Division five, alternate one, total of twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars. Two-four-four-zero-zero. Division five, alternate two, twenty-eight thousand four hundred. For totals, for alternate one of four million two hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and zero cents. Alternate two of six million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars and zero cents. Alternate three, total of two million eight hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and zero cents. Oh, uh, so I have two-eight-five-three-six-eight-one-point-zero-zero.
That's the same as their division one.
That's the same as the original. I was so many all had there, it was stuck behind there.
Okay, um, so that's, yes, and, and obviously there will need to be, we'll need to tabulate these and review them.
Yep.
Uh, I'm just reading as it, as it is here. Uh, and alternate four of, uh, three million one hundred thou- or, three million one thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and zero cents, which I think is the same also, yeah. Next is Integrity Grading and Excavating out of Schofield, Wisconsin.
Integrity?
Yes, integrity. You're gonna love to see it in bid. Before I, before I actually remove this to read it, I am not seeing a security with it.
It's behind the proposal.
Behind the proposal?
Yes, before the bid.
Oh, okay. Grab that here. Okay, uh, bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent. Appears correct. It recognized addendum one and two. Division one, alternate one, five million two hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Division one, alternate two of seven million eight hundred thirty-eight thousand ninety dollars and forty-nine cents. Division one, alternate three, three million six hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred six dollars and forty-nine cents. Division one, alternate four, three million nine hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Division two, alternate one, thirty thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Division two, alternate two of forty-one thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Division three, alternate one of one hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Division three, alternate two of one hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred two dollars and seventy cents. Division four, alternate one, twenty-one thousand two hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Division four, alternate two, twenty-five thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. Division five, alternate one, thirty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Division five, alternate two, forty-three thousand five hundred ten dollars and forty cents. Alternate one, total of five million five hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine, and ninety-three cents. Alternate two, eight million one hundred eighteen thousand one hundred forty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Alternate three, three million eight hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Alternate four of four million two hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Next is from Ritzel Excavator Inc. out of Burt, Iowa. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent. Appears correct. Recognized addendum one and two. Division one, alternate one, total of two million two hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and zero cents. Division one, alternate two, total of two million six hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred nine dollars and zero cents. Division one, alternate three, total of, one million seven hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and zero cents. Division one, alternate four, total of two million one hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred twelve dollars and zero cents. Division two, alternate one, seventeen thousand one hundred seventy dollars and zero cents. Division two, alternate two, eighteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars and zero cents. Division three, alternate one, ninety-four thousand five hundred sixty dollars and zero cents. Division three, alternate two, one hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and zero cents. Division four, alternate one, eleven thousand two hundred thirty dollars and zero cents. Division four, alternate two of eleven thousand five hundred sixty dollars and zero cents. Division five, alternate one, thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. One-three-eight-zero-zero. Division five, alternate two, fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars. One-five-eight-zero-zero. Alternate one, total of two million four hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and zero cents. Alternate two, total of two million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and zero cents. Alternate three, total, one million eight hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and zero cents. Alternate four, total of two million three hundred forty-two thousand two hundred forty-three dollars and zero cents. Next is Reddings Gravel and Excavating out of Algonah. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent. Appears in order. Recognized addendum one and two. Division one, alternate one, total of three million three hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and zero cents. Division one, alternate two, total of four million six thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars and zero cents. For the division one, alternate three, they have recorded no bid. Completed document but recorded no bid. For division one, alternate four, they have recorded no bid. Division two, alternate one, total of thirty-four thousand four hundred eight dollars and zero cents. Three-four-eight-zero-eight, or, three-four-four-zero-eight-point-zero-zero. I gotta edit myself there. Division two, alternate two, total of thirty-seven thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and zero cents. Division three, alternate one, total of one hundred thirteen thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars and zero cents. Division three, alternate two, total, one hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and zero cents. Division four, alternate one, twenty-three thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and zero cents. Division four, alternate two, twenty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and zero cents. Division five, alternate one, thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars. Three-one-two-zero-zero. Division five, alternate two, thirty-two thousand seven hundred twenty dollars and zero cents. Four, uh, total, alternate one of three million six hundred one thousand thirty-two dollars and zero cents. And a total on alternate two of four million two hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred, two hundred sixty dollars and zero cents. So that's four-two-four-eight-two-six-zero-point-zero-zero. And for alternates three and four, no bid. Next, I believe I'm, I believe I'm saying this right, is it McInich? Out of Des Moines.
Can you spell it?
Yes, it's, uh, capital M, lowercase c, capital A-N-I-N-C-H.
Otherwise I'd murder it.
Thanks Tyler.
You bet. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond. And five percent. Appears correct. It recognized addendum one and two. Division one, alternate one, total of three million seven hundred thirty thousand six hundred Three million seven hundred thirty thousand six hundred ninety eight dollars and eleven cents. Three seven three zero six nine eight point one one. Division one alternate two total of four million three hundred forty nine thousand nine hundred eighty two dollars and forty one cents. Four three four nine nine eight two point four one. Division one alternate three total two million nine hundred twenty five thousand six hundred fifty one dollars and forty cents. Two nine two five six five one point four zero. Division one alternate four three million three hundred twenty six thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Three three two six eight one three point five zero. Division two alternate one twenty two thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and sixty two cents. Two two seven one one point six two. Division two alternate two twenty nine thousand five hundred eighty one dollars and fifty six cents. Two nine five eight one point five six. Division three alternate one. Hundred forty three thousand three hundred twenty dollars and thirty cents. One four three three two zero point three zero. Division three alternate two hundred sixty four thousand one hundred eighty three dollars and five cents. One six four one eight three point zero five. Division four alternate one fourteen thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and seventy two cents. One four. Seven one five point seven two. Division four alternate two fifteen thousand fifty two dollars and thirty two cents. One five zero five two point three two. Division five alternate one fifteen thousand four hundred twenty two dollars and zero cents. One five four two two point zero zero. Division five alternate two seventeen thousand eight hundred sixty six dollars and zero cents. One seven eight six six point zero zero. Totals alternate one three million nine hundred twenty six thousand eight hundred sixty seven dollars and seventy five cents. Three nine two six eight six seven point seven five. Alternate two four million five hundred seventy six thousand six hundred sixty five dollars and thirty four cents. Four five seven six 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 five point three four. Alternate three two million nine hundred twenty five thousand fifty one dollars and forty cents. Two nine by nine two five zero five one point four zero. Alternate four three million three hundred twenty six thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Three.
Tyler, that's the same as.
Oh, okay.
For alternate four at least.
Okay, so that, that again will need to be, there appears that'll have to have the road crossing divisions added into it. Next is Holland, Holland Contracting out of Forest City. Iowa. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent. Appears correct. Proposal, they have recognized addendum one and two. Division one alternate one total of. Two million three hundred sixty nine thousand five hundred thirty eight dollars and zero cents. Two three six nine five three eight point zero zero. Division one alternate two total of. Two million eight hundred twenty two thousand five hundred three dollars and zero cents. Two eight two two five zero three point zero zero. Division one alternate three, they've recorded no bid. Divisions one alternate four, they have recorded no bid. Division two alternate one. Twenty six thousand ninety two dollars. Two six zero nine two. Division two alternate two twenty eight thousand two hundred seventy dollars. Two eight two seven zero. Division three alternate one hundred ninety five thousand eight hundred forty dollars. One nine five eight four zero. Divisions, division three alternate two two hundred forty eight thousand four hundred fifty five dollars. Two four eight four five five. Division four alternate one seventeen thousand six hundred forty four dollars. One seven six four four. Division four alternate two seventeen thousand six hundred forty four dollars. One seven six four four. Division five alternate one. Twenty thousand one hundred dollars two zero one zero zero. Division five alternate two twenty one thousand one hundred forty dollars. Two one one four zero. Total on alternate one of two million six hundred twenty nine thousand two hundred fourteen dollars. Two six two nine two one four. Alternate two total of three million one hundred thirty eight thousand twelve dollars. Three one three eight zero one two. Alternates three and alternates four, no bid. Next is Rognis Brothers Excavating out of Lake Mills, Iowa. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent. Appears complete or correct. They've recognized addendum one and addendum two. Division one alternate one total of two million thirty six thousand eight hundred eighty one dollars and fifty cents. Two zero three six eight eight one point five zero. Division one alternate two. Two million four hundred thirty five thousand eight hundred twenty one dollars and zero cents. Two four three five eight two one point zero zero. Division one alternate three. One million nine hundred thirty four thousand five dollars and seventy five cents. One nine three four zero zero five point seven five. Division one alternate four. Two million two hundred ninety three thousand seventy nine dollars and twenty five cents. Two two nine three zero seven nine point two five. Division two alternate one twenty one thousand two hundred dollars. Two one two zero zero. Division two alternate two twenty three thousand hundred eighty dollars. Two three one eight zero. Division three alternate one a hundred sixty six thousand three hundred twenty five dollars. One six six three two five. Division three alternate two hundred ninety thousand seventy five dollars. One nine zero zero seven five. Division four alternate one, or, division four alternate one fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. One four six zero zero. Division four alternate two fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. One four six zero zero. Division five alternate one thirteen thousand six hundred sixty dollars. One three six six zero. Division five alternate two fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. One five one zero zero. Alternate one total of. Two million two hundred fifty two thousand six hundred sixty six dollars and fifty cents. Two two five two six 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 point five zero. Alternate two two million six hundred seventy eight thousand seven hundred seventy six dollars and zero cents. Two six seven eight seven seven six point zero zero. Alternate three. Two million one hundred forty nine thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and seventy five cents. Two one four nine seven nine zero point seven five. And alternate four two million five hundred thirty six thousand thirty four dollars and twenty five cents. Two five three six zero three four point two five. Next is Legacy Corporation. I'm not sure, oh, oh, Illinois, that's, okay. Was having trouble making that up, that's um. He, out of East Moline, Illinois. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent. Appears correct. They have recognized addendum number one and number two. Division one alternate one total four million four hundred forty six thousand four hundred ninety five dollars and sixty cents. Four 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 six four nine five point six zero. Division one alternate two five million thirty eight thousand six hundred dollars and seventy cents. Five zero three eight six zero zero point seven zero. Division one alternate three total three million two hundred sixty thousand five hundred thirty six dollars and fifty cents. Three two six zero five three six point five zero. Division one alternate four total three million six hundred twenty thousand eight hundred twenty two dollars and forty cents. Three six two zero eight two two point four zero. Division two alternate one total twenty six thousand nine hundred sixty five dollars and eighty six cents. Two six nine six five point eight six. Division two alternate two twenty nine thousand five hundred fifty dollars and seventy five cents. Two nine five five zero point seven five. Division three alternate one. Hundred forty three thousand three hundred sixty nine dollars and fifty cents. One four three three six nine point five zero. Division three alternate two hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and seventy five cents. One six four eight three zero point seven five. Division four alternate one seventeen thousand five hundred fifty three dollars and sixty cents. One seven five five three point six zero. Division four alternate two of seventeen thousand five hundred fifty three dollars and sixty cents. One seven five five three point six zero. Division five alternate one nineteen thousand three hundred seventy two dollars and eighty cents. One nine three seven two point eight zero. Division five alternate two. Twenty three thousand two hundred twenty dollars and eighty cents. Two three two two zero point eight zero. Total on alternate one of four million six hundred fifty three thousand seven hundred fifty seven dollars and thirty six cents. Four six five three seven five seven point three six. Alternate two total five million two hundred seventy three thousand seven hundred fifty six dollars and sixty cents. Five two seven three seven five six point six zero. Alternate three total three million four hundred sixty seven thousand seven hundred ninety eight dollars and twenty six cents. Three four six seven seven nine eight point two six. Alternative four three million eight hundred fifty five thousand nine hundred seven, nine hundred seventy eight dollars and thirty cents. Three eight five five nine seven eight point three zero. Next is H and W Contracting. Next is H and W Contracting out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent. Appears correct. Recognize addendum one and two. Division one, alternate one, total of four million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and zero cents. Four, four, five, eight, five, five, nine, point, zero, zero. Division one, alternate two, total of five million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Five, two, eight, three, six, six, nine, point, seven, five. Division one, alternate three, total of three million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars. Three, one, seven, three, six, one, eight. Division one, alternate four, total of three million, five hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred six dollars. Three, five, seven, six, eight, zero, six, point, zero, zero. Division two, alternate one, thirty-five thousand, ten dollars. Three, five, zero, one, zero. Division two, alternate two, fifty-one thousand, five hundred ten dollars. Five, one, five, one, zero. Division three, alternate one, a hundred eighty-five thousand, sixty dollars. One, eight, five, zero, six, zero. Division three, alternate two, two hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and zero cents. Two, one, six, three, eight, five, point, zero, zero. Division four, alternate one, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. Two, two, nine, nine, eight. Division four, alternate two, twenty-nine thousand, towards sixty-eight dollars and zero cents. Two, nine, two, six, eight, point, zero, zero. Division five, alternate one, twenty-two thousand, four hundred eighty dollars. Two, two, four, eight, zero. Division five, alternate two, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. Two, nine, one, two, zero, point, zero, zero. Alternate one, total, four million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred seven dollars and zero cents. Four, seven, two, four, one, zero, seven. Alternate two, five million, six hundred nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Five, six, zero, nine, nine, five, two, point, seven, five. Alternate three, three million, four hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars. Three, four, three, nine, one, six, six. Alternate four, total, three million, nine hundred, three thousand, eighty-nine dollars. Three, nine, zero, three, zero, eight, nine, point, zero, zero. And the last one I have here is from Progressive Structures out of El Cader, Iowa. Bid security is in the form of a bid bond at five percent. Appears correct. They have recognized addendum one and two. Division one, alternate one, three million, two hundred thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars. Three, two, zero, zero, three, three, two, point, zero, zero. Division one, alternate two, three million, eight hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred four dollars. Three, eight, seven, three, six, zero, four, point, zero, zero. Division one, alternate three, two million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and zero cents. Two, four, five, nine, two, three, eight, point, zero, zero. Division one, alternate four, two million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred seven dollars. Two, nine, 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 four, zero, seven, point, zero, zero. Division two, alternate one, twenty-one thousand, three hundred forty dollars. Two, one, three, four, zero. Division two, alternate two, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars. Two, four, nine, seven, zero. Division three, alternate one, a hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred forty dollars. One, two, seven, four, four, zero. Division three, alternate two, a hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety dollars. One, four, eight, five, nine, zero. Division four, alternate one, fifteen thousand, two hundred two dollars. One, five, two, zero, two. Division four, alternate two, fifteen thousand, two hundred two dollars. One, five, two, zero, two. Division five, alternate one, twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. Two, zero, six, zero, zero. Division five, alternate two, twenty-two thousand, five hundred twenty dollars. Two, two, five, two, two, point, zero, zero. Four, total, alternate one, uh, three million, two hundred thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars, zero cents. Three, two, zero, zero, three, three, two, point, zero, zero. Alternate two, three million, eight hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred four dollars. Three, eight, seven, three, six, zero, four. And that sounds.
Is that the same?
That sounds familiar, that sounds the same as before. Okay. And then alternate three is.
Yeah.
Uh, two million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars. Two, four, five, nine, two, three, eight, point, zero, zero. Is that the same? So they're just missing the, the road divisions.
Didn't add the road.
Right, and then the last one is two million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred seven. Two, nine, 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 four, zero, seven, point, zero, zero, but those are obviously missing the road divisions. So, thank you everyone. We will have those tabulated and back for consideration, uh, in a week. Anything else come for the board?
Yes. I need to make a reclamation on my motion for the claims of smarting. I needed to. This happened. As I did in relation with whatever the claims being.
Add it all up and we'll get it turned back to you.
That feels on the record, but I should have seen at the time. Would not have changed it, but I did talk to Todd about that and clarify it. Shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you. Anything else? Are you saying a motion to a year?